We will go ahead and get started. We're actually starting tonight's meeting with the Hicksville Township trustees. It's a joint meeting, so we please stand for prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
All right, your heads if you so wish. Christian seventy-five, we come to you now, we give you thanks for this community, for our township, and give you thanks for the employees, the residents, and everybody who works to do a better job and make this a better place to live. We ask you to watch over those who have lost loved ones these past couple of weeks and just be with them, guide them. We ask you to be with those who are sick and just be with them and heal them in your loving power. We ask you to be with those in this country that are in stress and strife and just do diligence in providing better services to our community and to the residents of the United States. We ask you to be with our service personnel throughout the world and be with them and guide them through their diligence of making us free and safe in this country. We thank you in all that you do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Cheryl.
Bassett.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Egley.
Here.
McCullough.
Here.
Metz.
Here.
Seidig.
Here. But then, we do this once a year, alright? First time, is there anything that's working jointly together on some things? Is there any things that you guys want to bring us up to date what's happening in the township directly related to Hicksville, different areas? Call Husky Hush.
Nearly exposed to this per.
Do you have any current projects going on right now in the township? Just maybe update. A lot of people don't maybe see your minutes, maybe just bring them up to speed with what's going on. I mean, any road construction going on? I know we have something here in town going on, so.
We've got some widening out on State Line. We're gonna widen the east side between County Road 68 and Spencerville.
I don't know. Could you speak real loud, it's hard to hear.
If you could go up to the microphone, that would be.
Sorry, we're gonna put you on the spot, John, sorry.
Alright, out on State Line Road, we're gonna widen the east side from County Road 68 north to Spencerville Road, so then I'll put two feet more width on that. We've got some hot asphalt overlays. One scheduled out on Lake, but it's just, those are real quick. The State Line, it'll take me a day or so to get that widening done and set down.
I'd say probably the biggest impact might be, we're redoing some ditches on K-Sphere between like Spencerville and State Route 2, so the west side of that might be kinda.
What, for construction workers and stuff like that out there?
It's all depending on whether, at this point.
I've noticed what you did on K-Sphere, Miller, if I say that right, you widened it a little bit, right along that stretch right there? That's made it a lot easier. There's some certain county roads that are pretty narrow.
Yeah, that's, the first step is the ditch work, and then, so next year then we'll widen that stretch then too, approximately two and a half foot. And upcoming wise, we're looking at total revitalization of Jericho between 49 and Clamber or Lake, but that's probably already done already. That'll be closed for, about what they did on Buckskin is what we'll be doing. I'm gonna tear the whole road up.
Right, hasn't been a huge improvement on Buckskin.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's getting beat up pretty bad from the chicken ranch, I guess. And all the truck traffic going in and out there, so.
Are you finding more truck traffic out on the county roads?
Yeah, the biggest problem it seems to be for our roads and maintaining them is the manure, the manure hauling out. They'll take twenty, thirty, forty loads out over a couple of days down the same roads and just feed them to pieces. And it doesn't look like much, but next thing you know, it's $10,000 repairing sections, patching sections of road that, you know, they're not designed to handle the repetitive loading. I don't know that they're really overloaded or anything weight-wise, but it's just truck after truck, you know, and, you know, we've spent a fair amount of money in the last couple of years just maintaining, not even really improving, damage.
Refresh my memory, because I know we've talked about it. What's an average cost right now to resurface a road or kind of repair it?
Hundred thousand dollars to.
Per mile.
Yeah.
Hundred thousand dollars.
For a relatively narrow one.
Yeah.
Probably a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy for say a eighteen to twenty-foot road.
And then burrment and stuff, so we try our best to keep the cracks sealed with crack seal, and we see the crews out doing that here this summer. And then we use the Durapatch, the county comes in, and these small sections that we don't have to go in with asphalt overlay, significantly cheaper and seems to yield really good results on fixing small areas, so we try to focus on keeping them in decent shape before they start really falling apart to where you've gotta, you know, with Jericho, we just, we want more width to it, we want to do some improvement on the road base itself, it's just not.
You've got some trucking firms out that way, yeah. You know, they're doing well, which is good business for the township.
Yeah, like John said, I don't believe it's local trucks as much.
Right.
Because it's only one or two or three a day. It's the.
Trucks going from point A to point B.
Ten trucks every hour or something like that. I just, it's like running a truck route down Maple Street or something. You know, Maple Street wasn't built like 49, you know, so. We're just trying to keep up.
Sure. See, most of it's this year just maintenance and keeping things together, a little bit widening.
Do you have guys have any questions for council or anybody within the town limits?
You guys got any major projects that we're gonna have dirt or any coming down township roads, or that we're gonna have to work it off more?
Can't think of anything. I mean, the tower's pretty much done, the well field's done. Next real big project is the fine slip station, and if I'm thinking correctly.
I mean, like septic lines, you know, monter, blocks of septic lines or something where they're hauling out multiple dump truck roads or something.
I don't think this year it won't be. The next real big sanitary separation, storm separation would be what, the defined slip station down, what Hicks, those kinds of places, am I right, was planned, so. That's gonna be a year, a couple, two out. Well, if anybody does have anything left for the township, we will adjourn with that meeting and move into regular council.
Thanks for keeping it running, guys.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
So, motion to adjourn, right? Motion to adjourn. Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Seidig.
Coach.
Metz.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yep.
See you later.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Real quick, before I get started with regular council, I wanted to do a presentation at this time, that way if he wants to stick around, he's more welcome to, but if he wants to leave, he can do that too, but I'll leave that up to him. But at this time, I want to call Bruce Hart up. Over forty years of service for our community.
Bruce, on behalf of the Village of Hicksville, the fire department, and everything that
you've done for this community, saved many lives, been part of many different situations over the years and everything, we thank you for all your service and your time here at the department and everything you've done, but with the staff here at Hicksville, the council and the residents, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
At this time, I wanted to present you with this plaque, your name on it, the number of years that you've served Hicksville. Best of luck to you in your retirement, good luck in everything you do, God bless you.
Thank you.
You want to stand for a second? Regular council meetings, we've got approval of the council meeting from April fifteenth. Make a motion and prove it's written. Roll call.
Bassett.
I'm standing.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Egley. Yes.
Thank you. Richard Fox is here tonight, he was on the agenda. Richard, would you step up? You have something to address the council with?
Yeah. I didn't get no answer on the driveway where the street was paved over part of the driveway there, and I got about lift like that, and I get a lot of mud and all that stuff in there. Worst thing is, in winter time, it fills up full of water. Somebody goes down there and slipped and fall, and my question was, is who's gonna be responsible? You guys or me? I didn't cause the trouble. I mean, I didn't, of course, I didn't, we didn't live in the house at the time, but the street was raised higher, and when you get water, it really, it squishes up, the drive, up the approach, and it goes down, and it does eventually dissipate, but in winter time, when it freezes, and these people, for some reason, they use our driveway, a lot of times they cut across the street there.
Right. Was that something, correct me if my memory serves me well, but were they gonna take a look at that situation last time he was here to address it, or?
I don't remember the last time that road's been paved. When was that paved, do you remember?
Before.
Many, 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 many years ago, like twenty years ago or something, it's been like that?
I don't know.
I mean, it wasn't something we just recently did, I mean.
No, 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 it wasn't recent, no. It was there.
It was before your time, I mean, it's been like, I don't know, hicus.
Didn't you move here in the late nineties, was it, did you say?
Pardon?
It was the late nineties, you said you moved here in ninety-seven, ninety-eight?
Well, we lived at three fourteen Dixon Avenue.
No, I meant you moved over there.
Oh, we moved over there, I think about six years, probably, maybe seven, I don't know. Not very long, we just checked things out.
I didn't know if there was someone gonna now take a look at it with our street department and kind of check, because there's really not, no drain, I assume it's just standing there, then it's.
Well, the water, what it does is, the water comes up and goes up into the approach, and then the pavement is chipping off the regular, the symmetric driveways, chipping off, and then now it's kind of, it's got a thing there about like that, and it holds water. In the summertime, it don't really matter that much, but in the wintertime is what's, you know, it freezes. When you get a thaw, it freezes and fills up, and it won't drain out.
But it drains, does it drain now towards, when it starts draining, does it drain toward a drain?
Now it will, yeah. It takes, takes a while, but it goes, I don't know where it goes at, how it goes underneath the streets.
Well, usually in the wintertime, Richard, if we get those real thick, kind of heavy rains, it turns to ice, it builds up places, it's like that all over town. I mean, there's.
Yeah, but this is all, this is, this is, this is every time we have, it ain't no rain, it's when you have a snowstorm or something, and even when you put something on the street, it melts and it goes down the gutter, then the side, whatever little bit of curb we got, and it goes up into that there and sits there, and then if it's full, it runs, runs on down to the sewer part. It's just like it, it's the gutter goes up into the driveway approach.
True. I mean, guess what we could do is maybe send the street department down and kind of take a look at it, but I know this last rain we had, there was water getting collected all over the place, the driveways.
I'm not, I'm not.
Driveways are the same problem.
Yeah, I know.
It's the winter time when we're talking about.
Down where the handle factor is, all that water runs down from there, down all those driveways too. See it all over the place.
But if it's a situation where it takes a while to get rid of it, I mean, I can't speak for council, but I don't know when it's gonna get paved again here next, if it's on the agenda for down the road, but.
Well, my question is, is who's responsible? If a guy or a woman walks on their slides, falls, breaks their head, that's what I'm talking about.
We kind of have situations like that all over town, you know, if it snows and somebody decides to walk on your sidewalk, you got a couple inches of snow in there and they slip, you know, and due diligence and shoveling and getting rid of that stuff, but you might not be out there before they start walking on your sidewalk kind of thing, and that just happens.
Well, usually if you, not when anybody around here sees it, usually I'm one of the first ones to get it walked clean off, even if it's snowing.
Right.
I like to keep it cleaned off.
Yep.
Because we walk, don't we? We like to walk. Okay, next thing is, is a cemetery, the sidewalk on cemetery, now I don't know if it's got stones on it yet, but also in the wintertime, I talked to the, I assume the fellow that runs the graveyard out there, or you know, it's a sexy, I don't know what they call it, and he said that it is not the responsibility to clean the stones off there or the snow.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, I know he does the driveways out there, it's something, we'd have to check with Ron on that.
Yeah, well, I talked to him, he says we told, I mean, of course, you can check to see if we're telling the truth.
I know that sidewalk too is in really bad disrepair.
There is, but even when you get a new one put on there, in wintertime, there's snow piled on it from the, when they plow that side.
It's right up against the road, so as soon as you shovel it and the plows come along, it's inundated with snow, so maybe that's not a good area to walk in the wintertime because you can't stop it.
Well, if I walk out to Hager, and I've seen other people, if I walk out to Hager out there, I walk, I always use the walks, if I can, I don't like to walk on streets because it's a detriment, so. And we still have speeders on Bryan Street, and also that big gas trunk is full, got gas in it going down a little narrow residential street, which I, I brought this up to the last mayor about that deal, that's not, I've seen other semis, got that wholesale house go in there, and this guy here, he just needs to come in on state route and pull his truck in there and not go by the side of the house. That's a dangerous situation. The state highways are wider, that street is a narrow street, and it's, it is something that could happen to, you know, you have a problem.
Right. So, I'm not sure I would address that as a semi driver compared to what dropping on fuel at, depending on always turning it into the tanks and everything.
Well, I was told that's the only way you can do it, but I'm sure there's, I said, well, maybe you need a different truck driver, because there's, I know truck drivers can put a, put a truck in this in a little narrow space, so it's not a very good idea for them to go down a residential street, I don't think.
It's probably not a good idea, but there's nothing, it's the law, it keeps them from going down, there's no truck signs.
Right.
Well, but, but we can both, I don't, how much is a no truck sign? Is it very expensive?
It's not as simple as final sign.
Huh?
It's not as simple as final sign, there's.
It's something that, it's something that Cory and I had a discussion several weeks ago about the truck traffic on the side roads.
Yeah, it's beating the, beating the streets down, I mean, they're not made for it.
Yeah, because you got trucks coming up hard through the street, you know, cutting back, but we actually just had a discussion several weeks ago about that.
I can see a dump truck or something like that, because they go through there, but they, they drive this, and that's dangerous, it's full of gasoline, I mean, if something happened, I mean, of course, I know it could, and a state route too. Okay, that's all I got to say. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Richard. All right, approval of the bills list.
I got a question. Concrete at the flagpole, Purnit Three D Services. I thought we kind of decided we'd just come to quit using him after that last go-around.
This is in December.
Okay. And then, Tranco Inc., Copland CBL, thirty-two fifteen, we pay for people to give their license, and then they.
They have to have school now according to federal government, and that's why it costs a lot.
I got work ground. Take care.
Brian executing on that well field, is that the final?
Don't look at me.
You're gonna be across the board.
Cory would be.
He has no idea.
That's all.
That's final. And choice one for Meadow and Beverly project, is that it?
No, there's three of them. It was in your email.
Right, but I mean, is that it for the, that section for Beverly Drive and Meadow?
Yes, closing was for that.
It did a nice amount of paving that Saturday, and then Anger just muddied it all up today.
Who did?
And, my golly, that's all I got. We might as well pay them, if we want to come back.
Roll call.
Beverly.
Yes, ma'am.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Egley. Yes. Bailey.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
All right, boards of commissions, none submitted. Anybody have anything for that? Council committee reports, looks like there's a finance committee and ordinance committee in your packet.
Does anybody have any questions on the finance committee notes? About them sidewalk notes, anybody got questions on them?
I do, the one we had about bringing the full council about putting containers out, yes, about nine fifty-one dot oh five, about setting the trash cans out.
Yeah.
I was actually in favor of the twenty-four hours pickup before and after, and I know a couple of you guys weren't. Main thing is, people that work second shift, you know, get their trash can in the same day, or somebody works third shift, or somebody that works over, or you know, you're going out of town, you want to put out a day early. I know what it says, seven, at one time it was seven o'clock in the morning, don't put it out before seven AM. The trash trucks are actually picking up before seven AM. Every week, they're out there before seven o'clock, they start pulling into town about twenty after six. Sometimes they'll park across from the school, they'll park over by the bus bar, and they'll sit there and wait, but by six forty, six forty-five, they're, they're pulling trash. So, to say somebody can't get placed out until seven AM, if you wait till seven, you might already have missed your pickup.
Didn't it say two PM the day before is when you set it up?
Seven AM.
You haven't picked up by seven that night.
Yeah, not now, but it says, all refuse of garbage and recycling containers shall be placed at the curb before, before, before seven AM on the scheduled pickup day for re-chosements. Watch yourself.
We need a little community in there.
Well, some ordinance committee wants to address a little further, or?
Do you want to address it now and just?
Put to vote.
Go with the twenty-four?
That's what we said, I mean, we said, let's just bring to everybody, put you above.
Yeah, that's what I want to kind of bring up. Make the most of it, Robert.
Can I?
Sure.
All right. So, am I moving that we make all of the recommended, I guess?
Do the, do the one Eric's talking about first.
Okay, so we'll start with that one. I'll move that we change the chapter nine fifty-one oh five, section B of the refuse collection ordinance, from what it currently reads to twenty-four hours before pickup and twenty-four hours after.
I'll second that.
Roll. Roll call.
Oh, it's changing the ordinance, yeah.
Yeah. We recommend that change.
Yeah.
In the ordinance, I mean, if that's what you want to do.
Wait for the ordinance to be wrote, written, and then you vote on it. Okay.
Anybody see anything else that needs to be changed?
It seemed like the rest of them, you guys, it was unanimous, so.
But it was just nip and tuck in the sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know really anything about what sidewalk standards are supposed to be, I'm assuming that's what you guys are trying to do, is standardize the work so it's written in stone.
Take all the gray area out.
Yeah, the only question I had was the one about grinding, was there a reason why Cory didn't want any grinding to be done? I mean, the village hasn't even hired the company to come in and grind some of our own sidewalks down over here.
The reason that we as a group decided we didn't like it is because it's still not quite right, and the pitch and everything is still not an ADA's type of thing, it would never pass, and when you take a four inch or three and a half inch sidewalk and ground three inches off of it to get it down to the height of the existing sidewalk beside it, you just, you know, you're just putting trouble a year away, so we might as well fix it right and have it done with.
Was that the same reasoning behind not allowing blocks to be lifted, to level them out?
Usually when you lift, when you pick a block out, like if you're doing a sewer cut, and you come through and you saw cut, and you lift that block out, well, even if you're good enough to get it out and not break it, there's no way to pin it, so that when you get your compacted base back in over top of your sewer pipe, you put that in there, nothing settles like Mother Nature. I don't care what kind of compactor you run, nothing settles like Mother Nature, and so because you can't pin it because of where it's at and how it's at, it's going down. So, you know, grandma had to pay to get the sewer done, and now she's got to pay that guy to come back next fall or whenever to pick it back up. It's just better to pour one, pin it to each side and pour it. We're trying to keep repetitive stuff out, so it's not every couple of years that somebody's getting a letter.
Well, like you said though, Ron, Mother Nature settles things and changes things, works different things. What I feel sometimes is maybe unfair is if you do your due diligence and spend two-hundred hours or two thousand in sidewalk repair, and for some reason it starts cracking or moving, and then a year later they come back and say, hey, you're, you just spent a bunch of your hard work, earned money, and now you got to fix it again. That's, that's, to me, is a hard thing to swallow. You did your due diligence in the repair work, and Mother Nature starts acting like a small crack to me, and you're forced to repair it from a small crack if it's not upheaved. I've had a situation with that.
Right, I just don't want this town to be a financial burden to its citizens, right? We're not allowing them to try to fix it, we're just forcing them to completely redo it, that's a little bit more costly.
Maybe I misunderstood that, I, just like I, me and my neighbor, he's got one that's about to, he can still come in and.
He can foam it up.
He wouldn't be taking that panel out, so you can lift them, you just can't take a whole panel out and put it back.
Well, it says the blocks lifted.
But you can't lift it out.
Well, it doesn't say lifted out, it just says lifted.
Say you might need to clear that up there, but yeah, you can still jack them up, if that's the right word.
Yeah, it says if one or two blocks are tilted, cuts shall be made, the blocks lifted, the gravel re-tamped and leveled, and the blocks replaced, he wants that moved entirely. So, you can't even do that. But that would include lifting blocks.
Yeah, so I want to say if the panels removed rather than.
Well, I mean, I guess that's how, if you take that out, then.
The section you just read that we want removed is when you physically pick the pad out of it, clear out, do whatever you're gonna do, and then try to put it back in. That's the part I just explained to you. You can't pin it and secure it.
Is there another ordinance that states that putting foam in there and lifting it, or whatever, I don't know the terminology, but putting something in there and lifting it is okay?
That's what we're trying to establish, and I don't know if it, it's obviously not clear enough, or you have got hold of.
Not clear enough.
Not clear enough. So, give him, him the devil.
Oh, well, no, I mean.
If you can foam it, you know, like if you have your driveway and it drops down, you got a concrete drive and it drops down, and you got that big a bump to go into your garage.
Yeah.
You can foam that.
Right, but here it says that you can't, he wants to remove it so that they can't be lifted, so I guess that's my question is, what are we? Right. But here it says that you can't, he wants to remove it so that they can't be lifted. So I guess that's my question is, what are we defining as lifted? Removing the whole entire block or using some sort of, because it doesn't say that yet.
If you take the whole entire block out.
Well, it needs to say that.
They make it remove.
Well, you, like I said, you guys got time to read these. I mean, I think the ordinance committee to come in and try to put some of these things and streamline them, so. You got to come back by ordinance, right? If you have any questions, if you don't want to vote for them, if you have a chance.
Is there, is there anything else that, we talked about this stuff for a long time. Trying to get all the gray areas out, make it as simple and easy as it can be, uh, make it easy on the people, and, uh, hopefully, if there's anything else that you even think has a little bit of gray in it, let's fix it tonight.
One thing I could say for sidewalk ordinance, I mean, I don't see there are any changes in here, but maybe to have a date set to where people will be notified by this day, let's say, of April first of each year, and they have a deadline of, you know, September first. So let the resident know how much it would cost approximately if the village did the work. So, and from this whole last issue.
Our new guy there that is, to date, has done an exceptional job. Uh, he is devising a plan. How he's going to approach it, attack it, however you want to phrase it. Uh, and also, uh, and the mayor said something about, uh, you put a sidewalk in and, and, uh, a year later, two years later, it's going to crack it. We're not coming back to that crack. We're doing
Quadrants.
Quadrants.
But just word specific.
We're not coming back to that first quadrant that that man just spent the two thousand dollars on, on crack, until everybody else is done. Doesn't that sound good?
They did talk about giving up more time.
We, we talked about doing May, starting it in May versus, that way it gives, if there's an assessment in the, in the next year, there's time to do that without being right on top of, you know, that, we only have in thirty days to do, you know, to get the bill, and then you got till September first. If you're doing August, August, you don't have, you only have thirty days. So if you do May to May, that gives, that gives throughout the whole summer. Versus the end of summer when it's getting much, much harder to pour concrete, it starts to get wet, it starts to get cold. So that gives the resident, you know, if you, if you give them, send them something May first, that, that gives them the whole summer to repair it, and then the following year it has to be assessed, and then you got from May to September.
Can we, can we also maybe let them know ahead of time that their quadrant's going to be the next year to be assessed? So then that gives them additional year to save, plus a year
Sure.
to do it. It might be nice to know, hey, guess what? You guys are, are up. You know, I don't know if that looks, what that looks like, putting it on their water bill.
It, it's gonna, my, my plan, and I think we're, we're, me and Cory are in agreement with it, and you guys can tell me what you think of it. I'm just going to simply follow our bulk trash
Recycle.
quadrants.
Quadrant.
That seems to be broken up good enough, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel just to do it for sidewalks, right?
Yeah.
And then.
People should already know it, too.
Right.
Use the similar quadrants for, um, leak pickup especially as well, so people kind of know what that looks like.
Yeah, and I've, I've, I've often tried to think of a way to get this information to people. The young lady last time said, you know, how are people supposed to know? Because maybe they don't want, you know, so that's, that's something I'm trying to put together in my head, and I'll, I'll take any ideas with that as well. Because even, you can't send a, I mean, water bill is a good, a good way to do that. Maybe we amend that map and, and label it with this, how sidewalks are going to be done, too.
And maybe then put the year on it.
Sure.
So in, you know, twenty twenty.
Yellow is the twenty twenty-five.
Five, yes.
Yeah.
So they know what year they're, that, you know, be looking, be on the lookout for.
Absolutely.
Do you have any type of a timeframe when you might, I, I realize you walked in, you, you've got your hands full, and you're doing a great job getting things straightened out. But any, any, just a general idea of when you might be able to say, okay, this is what we're going to do?
We decided to take this year completely off, and I
Okay.
and I think we expressed that several, a month or so ago. This year, we're, we're going to start fresh next May. That way we have a plan, we can, you know, we can execute the plan without going, oh, we should have done that.
Well, I guess what I'm, I'm, I mean, I probably didn't present it properly, but when do you think you'll have something that, when the people come in to pay their water bill, she can slip one out there and go, here's, here's what's going to happen in the next four years? And have your map done with, like, like these two said, with the quadrants in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six? When do you think you'll have something like that?
I would say within the next two to three months.
Oh, great.
We're, because we're, I mean, right now is a very, very busy time.
Sure.
For me, doing nuisance and mowing and
Yep.
and so forth, uh, it's not something that I work on every day.
Yep.
So I would say within the next, by, by the end of summer, I would, I would like to, you know, have a plan and present it to whoever.
And I agree with Tony, it would be nice if that was, if, if we're going to start twenty-five,
Sure.
if we could get this information to them in twenty-four, the end of twenty-four.
Yeah. I would see, I would say, for me personally, I would say, if you're going to start in May, I think the town should know by the first of next year, however we decide to do it.
Before Christmas, that might keep them from spending too much money.
That, that's a good point.
I know that, um, a lot of people talking about transparency.
Sure.
It came up quite a bit. And I think that this protects you as well, right? So then if people come back to you and say, I didn't know, if we get those numbers and those, those years out to them in advance, you know, potentially four years in advance, then people can prepare for that, and that's us being transparent.
And what we're finding is, is mailing is not
Yeah, I heard you.
not the way to go. Um, I had a lot of.
I would recommend the website. I mean, I use it all the time.
Adopt the garbage schedule, cover it whenever you're, and just put in a year with a note for sidewalk.
Sure.
You wouldn't have to reinvent all of that. You've already done it.
And then with a little narrative that says, like, letters will go out May first, you'll have a year to fix it. And the only thing I'm hesitant about is if we say, this is what it would approximately cost if the village does it. Well, we need to, like, kind of stick by that, because people are going to base their decision on, oh, it's only going to be eight hundred dollars if the village does it, where my contractor's saying it's going to be a thousand, but then it comes back when the village does it, and it's fifteen hundred. We're going to have a lot of Matt Beepers.
We're not doing that. We're not playing that game again.
Well, I say, why do we have to tell people what we think it might cost? That's not our job.
I would avoid doing that.
Because you're not going to be running the same thing you just ran into.
Yeah. Just lift.
Yep.
One other thing, while Jared's still in the hot seat here. Rachel, the chapter five twenty-one dot one-two. Jared, did you want to chime in on that regarding the definition of a dwelling?
Oh, yeah.
Um, actually, we, we did, she came and spoke with me.
Cool.
Um, I don't know where, uh, we didn't speak today. I just got back today, and I don't know where she's at on that. I kind of, we would like to just simply change the word to structure.
Yeah, I think so. I think dwelling really makes us, and honestly, the Everybody's Code has really bad definitions of dwelling. I, I, I was hard pressed to find a really good definition.
Kind of go, the kind of, the O R C kind of goes back and forth, back and forth.
Structure is a pretty common blind.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's easy to do.
I think so. I think that's the best way to handle it.
Anybody got anything else for sidewalk? One thing I'd like to add, because it's still in the back of my mind, I would still like to see where we put on our water bills, something where we pay, each person that has a water bill pays three or four or five dollars, whatever computes out to what we need, plus our seed money from the village. That, then the village just fixes the sidewalks. You don't worry about them. They're paid for because you paid your three dollars or five dollars. I brought this up years ago, and, and, but most of the people around here were landlords.
We haven't had a chance to get a meeting scheduled with Cory, myself, Kent, and I don't know who the other one was, uh, you, for the water sewer rates, and Cory had an idea about changing base rate, maybe it'll help offset that. But we had a look at the numbers, but that was what we were going to bring up.
Right. That was my question. Where does that even start? Does it start with finance? Does it start with water sewer?
Well, we wanted to, Cory had an idea about the base rate.
Right.
So we were going to kind of try to talk about water sewer first and see where it went from there. Don said we had to set the rates for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and we have to meet. We just have to.
And I think it, I think it does kind of take that undue burden off the taxpayer. That has to pay that to come up with that.
Need to.
Astronomical figure, it appears to be.
So maybe that, that changes everything with the ordinance, too.
Right, right.
That's.
So hopefully here in June, we can meet.
Copy base, so.
That's what Rachel wants to do, change ordinances. I think that's it. Robert?
Administrator at Park Court was not able to be here tonight, but he, um, sent a document saying what he's been up to here, started on May sixth. Any questions on that?
Do you know if we have an update on the ballpark lights? That get done or stopped?
No, um, yeah, I talked to him about that. Um, weather, obviously delayed it.
Rain.
Yes, because the back of the fields are still pretty wet. He was hoping within a, a month, yeah, but he said it like sixty thousand pounds. And, and you can't even walk right now without sinking, so.
Yep.
Um, he was hoping within a month, though.
Another splash pad, we actually did a groundbreaking ceremony, a small one. A lot of the donors, some of the contractors were there. I wanted to thank Cory for getting, arranging that with everybody. It was a nice little ceremony, just thanking them for their time, due diligence, and putting it together. As I said, we met with some of the contractors who were down there. Uh, things are moving on pretty good. I think the next group came in here was yesterday or today. Knuckles is done with their base work, and then now they're playing the piping, so it's moving forward. Um, I think it's on schedule from what they said, so. I wanted to thank Cory for.
He did it all the rain. I was expecting that to be delayed, so.
And Knuckles had some backup days, but they're good, they got the stuff done, so. That's moving forward. Hopefully get that built here before summer ends, in ways some of the kids can enjoy it, so. Any other questions about, Cory's not here, but like I said, if you have questions for Cory, uh, call him, meet him at his office, and you can talk to him, so. Solicitor's report.
First one, final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight by caption only to amend appropriations.
To move.
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
We have the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero by caption only amending pay ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one seven and declaring emergency. Make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Just a quick question on that. So since we eliminated fire chief in there, and just says part-time, will have to change that, wants to be hired full-time?
It'll still be considered part-time?
Well, no, the fire chief is, I mean, I guess it's part-time, but it was just fire chief in general, and it never said part-time or full-time. Before. And this one does now.
Yeah.
Do you think the terminology needs to be changed?
Well, currently we have, like, an interim fire chief.
Right, he's just filling in the position. Um, but what did it say, Cory? We didn't change that at all. It's always been, has it always been part-time, part, it's full-time?
Well, he's, he's always been part-time, but I typed it in here. Oh, my goodness, can we take it out?
No, I'm just curious, because it used to always say this.
Fire chief.
Okay, okay. I'll make questions. Yes.
You okay with it?
Yeah.
Beverly?
Yep.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
This is, this is, suspend the rules.
Correct.
Yes.
Egley?
Yes. And second, final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one zero by caption only amending pay ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one seven and declaring emergency.
To move.
Second.
Roll call.
Egley?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
First reading of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-one by caption only to enter contract with Bombin Enterprises Incorporated for the water tower demolition project and declaring emergency.
To move.
Second.
Has anybody, has anybody said when he can start?
Look at me. I thought, uh, didn't make the same.
The mayor says right to say.
Oh, I, I did not hear about that at all. I don't get all the.
They plan to have a tower demo by mid-June, but I don't know how long it takes. That's what Cory had in his mind.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So mid-June?
Was that, how should he have budgeted that, do you remember?
It was, uh, from the commission, a hundred, that was the number. Wasn't that? Was that what that?
For the demo?
Demo. That was, oh, that was what he sent out today.
No, exactly. Okay, that's good.
It was under.
The one ten was the engineer's estimate.
Okay, yeah, it was under.
I forget what he got, C D B G.
And we were over the engineer's estimate on C D, C D B G money soon.
Oh, was that today?
Yeah.
Were you at the trail?
So that was.
Motion to suspend the rules. Motion to suspend the rule, roll call.
All right, Bassett?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Second, final reading of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-one by caption only to enter contract with Bombin Enterprises Incorporated for the water tower demolition project and declaring emergency.
To move. Second.
Roll call.
Egley?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Have we discussed what we plan on doing with that property, if anything?
He knows that once it's.
The library had expressed maybe some interest.
Yes, I knew that the library.
Right. But once we got a demo, I thought we were going to address maybe, because we were kicking around where, if that new tower had to be built, we were kind of seeing where, because that's positioned proper, right where, you know, they wanted the nine-one-one tower, so. We weren't sure, maybe a new one had to be built, but I know Bruce and, and Cory and different people have been working on, uh, changing, that's not the place it needs to be, so.
I don't see how this tower at seventy-five feet's going, going to be able to be doing what that one did at a hundred and eighty-six.
I was just saying that, they, they looked at it, so.
But there's no rush to sell it.
No. Let's get it down safely without, you know, any property getting damaged or anything, hopefully no rain. They get things moved. Uh, there is that building underneath, too, that's got, that's not the demo, I think it's the building, too, that's got to be replaced.
Melvin or whoever owns that garage, do they pay the village for that, to use that? Just have it sit there?
No, we strip free internet.
But we don't anymore. So why are they there free? They're not in there. I mean.
MediaCom's in the, the shed, because that's where, MediaCom has equipment in the shed. That's where the switcher is that we use to go from the council room to the one out in the.
Not the head end that's underneath the, the tower. The garage is.
Oh, that one, yeah, that I don't know.
Yeah, that's just full of junk, and, and people party in there.
I wouldn't know about that.
The Fisher, that's why. Fisher's a buy. The big garage.
Yeah.
At the end of it. Okay, well, you just want to make sure your top line is ready.
But that's our property, right?
Yeah.
And that's our garage, right?
No, I think it's MediaCom's.
MediaCom garage.
It's not ours.
Do they pay to?
That might have been some deal when they came to town. That's been there. Before you were even on council and I was a district.
Is it their building on our property?
It's been there long before my time, so I don't know what was, what the agreement was.
We could look into, have our, have our solicitor look into, uh, seeing what it takes to get that out. This is junk.
They won't be on the tower anymore. Do you know what they're going to do, Bill? Will they even need anything?
No, I, I mean.
I, I honestly, I honestly don't know if they're planning on, they, they, they put in a lot of fiber and so forth. So whether they need to have equipment on the tower anymore, or whether they still need to have equipment in the head end, or, you know, that I, I could, you'd have to try to find somebody at MediaCom willing to answer your questions.
I'm not sure what their plans are. I know they've been told for years it's coming down, or to that point, it's coming down.
The last, the last time I talked with, uh, with, they, they said that they, they were pretty sure that they did not need any of the equipment that they had on the tower going forward. But, uh, but, but beyond that, for all of the other, the, the buildings and the stuff in those buildings, I couldn't speak to.
We should have Cory contact MediaCom, like, soon, so we can find out.
Because they had told me six years ago they wouldn't need the tower anymore.
But I don't.
I don't know what they've been since, and what that building ever did.
Sure.
Our unit that's up there that is, is the next phase coming up, because that thing. Our unit that's up there that is, is the next phase coming up, because that thing been up there forever?
The nine-one-one tower, you mean?
No.
No. The repeater, yeah.
The repeater, that, the repeater?
Yeah.
Repeater's been up there for at least twenty-five years and better.
Yeah. So, it could be, possibly be junk, I mean, it still works, but by the time you get it.
Pretty much P and R said that it's probably twenty-five years old, you're probably better off to replace, and put a new one.
And if I, if I work for them, I'd set that too.
And, and to answer your question, June nineteenth.
June nineteenth what?
That's a post start date, to turn that down.
Ah.
How do I know that? It's because Corey sent me that today, because he had told me that he wasn't gonna be here, and that, that repeater is part of what I was going to be bringing up.
True. Yeah, he's got some discussion about the repeater and that tower.
Yeah, I, I can't believe, we knew, we knew this was coming down forever and, and we waited till, you have the last ones off, off of it?
And it would have been a lot cheaper seven years ago.
Yeah, buddy.
Well, I guess I'll be, is there money in the budget for this?
For a repeater?
Oh, for their budget?
No.
What are you pointing to?
Police chief, it's up next.
Okay, yeah, oh, you're moving me along, that's okay.
Bless you, sir. I thought, that's exactly what I thought.
Well, yeah, let's hope after you do this.
When do we talk about this? Let's get, let's get to the chief, Dan, do you have anything for the council chief then?
Well, we're talking about towers and stuff, I got email Thursday or Friday saying we're at least possibly sixty to ninety days where they're gonna turn this tower on.
How can they do that?
Don't know.
They said it's a, go ahead.
I responded back and agreed with Chief Wilkins today that we need to take some type of litigation against that company, or, um, my thing is, is the state system, here in the AG's office or the governor's office gets involved, of course. Whether it's a court order to get it turned on, I don't know, but they're going with Frontier now, but, and not this company, so I don't know what's going on.
Well, how can, how can somebody have something built, pay for it, and then the people that did it refuse to turn it on for again, that's, uh.
And I talked to the county commissioners over here on Thursday and asked them about it, and they said the same thing, too, they're looking at two to three months, they're shaking their heads, it's all down at the state level and it's like their hands are tied, so.
I'm gonna call my little buddy Roy Clough, see what he can do for us.
Well, that's on my list to do.
Call Roy?
Ralph.
How?
You know, my, my biggest fear is someone's gonna get hurt, or someone's gonna get killed because of the radio issues.
Right. And that affects, right, and that affects this whole thing, that's all.
Absolutely does. So, no, the state's telling us once we gotta have our radios updated by twenty twenty-five, you know, they don't care about the towers, you know, for us to be able to use the tower. But they're worried about radios being cloned.
This Marx system's been, been a pain ever since it started.
But, yeah, so this agile company or whatever, I think they ought to be held responsible, but I guess I'm not an attorney, I'm not a, a judge, but I think that's.
But we didn't, we have no power because it's the states, right?
Starting now, yes.
Our hands are tied.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's belong.
Yep, but in the meantime, I mean, you can call, I'll call Roy, you feel like you do diligence, to call Roy or Rob McCollie and see if we can get somebody to, uh, push the state to get this, this ridiculous mistake in too long, so. Over to talk to our reps and see if we can move quicker for the next day or two.
Some people are paying for it right now.
Right, unless that work.
Man, some work.
I feel like I got detoured to Fort Wayne or something. What's that got to do with this upper back here? Maybe I'm missing something. We'll get there. We shifted gears. Oh, my goodness. How about we just stay in one gear? Oh, okay, let's patiently wait for an explanation.
Is that all you got, chief?
Yeah.
Correct, thank you. EMS, Bruce?
There we go.
Now we're there.
Now we're not there.
Why would we do that with a fire, I don't know. Before I get started, I just want everybody to know that we have cake over there for Bruce's retirement, so, so you guys can come over and have cake afterwards. Uh, so, a repeater, um, yeah, myself, Stacy, uh, we had nine-one-one director up here, we had P and R Communications, we had SMTA here. P and R did look at the repeater that was sitting there underneath the water tower, and it is twenty-five years old, and they said they could move it, um, but there's no guarantee that it would work afterwards because it's twenty-five years old. Uh, they can, they can put in a new one right over here at the firehouse with the battery backup, uh, a one-hundred watt repeater, and it would, it would work. And the reason why you need the repeater is, right now, all of the West End gets paged off that repeater, so not only us, but Farmer. Guess what else works on that? The tornado sirens. No repeater, no tornado siren. That's a problem.
And that's honestly the main thing, because.
That's honestly the main thing.
We got Marx pagers that will work now without the new tower, new Marx tower. They came in today, they're not programmed, but we got them, so as far as fire department's concerned, once we get the new Marx pagers programmed in the next week or two, we don't need the repeater, we're just like the police, but your tornado sirens need them.
Your tornado siren needs it and Farmer Fire Department.
Right.
Will, if that, will Farmer split this fourteen with us?
I have not asked that of, of, uh, Jerry yet, I mean, I can a hundred percent ask him.
I mean, no, it seems right.
I'm not gonna.
I think it'd be a discussion you have, yes, because it's just as well for them that it is.
Right.
Right, right.
Because it's our tornado and their tornado siren off the front.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're, it's a joint thing, it benefits both of us.
So, Farmer Township in theory should split with us.
So, right now, right now, the, right, what you have in front of you, the cost would be to put that repeater in, in the building next door at, at the fire station with the, with it being linked up to the tower out back, the eighteen hour back. And yes, it will work because it's a one-hundred watt repeater, it's brand-new, uh, P and R said that what you have now may, may be operating at about thirty watts. Um, he's, he couldn't give me, uh, an actual number, but he's like, it's twenty-five years old, you know?
But, but he thinks that, that a, a one-hundred watt unit on, on that seventy-five foot tower is gonna get out? And, I mean, the thing that I'm seeing is, is he gets put on this seventy-five foot tower, immediately we have problems and he goes, well, you know, you, we're not high enough, we'll have to put a tower back here and.
He guaranteed that that would work out.
He was very confident.
He was very, he was very adamant.
That's what I like to hear.
What is gonna potentially happen anyways?
Because.
They were already looking into purchasing towers, because we don't have anything.
To put it on. Yeah, we, we were, we had actually looked, talked to SMTA, SMTA did have a tower, uh, that is about the same height as, as the water tower over here, and they had that for, for, that we could have bought for ten grand. Okay, the problem is, it's in Sherwood, so you're gonna spend another fifteen to twenty to get it moved from Sherwood to here. Okay, so now, so now, why do that when, when the guys from P and R are sitting there saying, look, this will work? Um, and.
They'll put it in writing, let's do it.
I'm a pessimist, and I'm nothing against the fire department at all.
Are you serious?
Isn't that what the Marx was labeled as? This is gonna be the cure-all for.
Yep, so, I, I, I'm going, I'm, I'm.
And I'm not saying that you guys is.
No, I, I know, I, I know, so, I will say.
You can force people to go to Marx.
I will, I will say this, I will say this, Farmer has been trying to buy more Marx stuff, okay, but they're just like everybody else, they're, they're, they have their financial constraints as well. Can a tornado siren at some point use the Marx system? Yes, but that's probably gonna be another ten, fifteen thousand dollars, so why would we not go ahead and just spend the fifteen thousand dollars now? And, and honestly, I can talk to Jerry, uh, the fire chief over there, but I think that is a, an issue for, for politicians to figure out who's splitting costs, you know?
Well, I think you, your space has to have a conversation with Jerry, you, you two.
Well, I mean, Jerry.
And then the championship trustees and the probably, I don't know, finance or police and fire committee probably need to.
Jerry knows that, Jerry knows that this is happening, um, you know, again, we, Stacy and I were, we found out about this two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
About three.
About three weeks ago, and we immediately started making phone calls and doing, and having meetings to try and get the. And everybody that's been helping you came on, on scene immediately. Yes. You guys had everybody here, got a plan together and. We had everybody here, um, just so that way, that way we could all be on the same page. We weren't sitting there, uh, trying to make phone calls and say, well, this is happening, this is happening, no, everybody's here, uh, nine-one-one, uh, nine-one-one is. Is aware of what's going on, in fact, the day that they go to, uh, to install it, uh, they will, we will actually be testing the sirens just to make sure that everything is A-OK before, before we make the switch.
Is this like a one-day completion, or will we be without a siren for a period of time?
No, that's gonna be one day.
Okay.
That's one day, they, they said you might be without a siren for about two, three hours, but, you know.
Well, it's a flip of a switch, if we leave that one alone, go here, it's a flip of a switch.
Works, right, and right now, right now, um, the, the tornado sirens are all started down at, down at the county level, so, um, you know, once they, once they start, uh, once we tell them, yes, go, we need to test, we can just call them and they can, they can, we can do the tests right then and there, just to make sure.
I guess, Kate, you've misunderstood, I, I'm not opposed to this, but when this company promises it's gonna be built.
That's what I've heard with Marx for.
How many years?
So, so. Well, yeah, and I guess you try to use that. That's my only concern.
The, the way that, the way that Alan and, and the, the guy was just very knowledgeable, the way that Alan described it is that the VHF that this u, that this uses is not like a, is not like a linear.
It doesn't need line of sight.
Yeah.
No, I guess I'll make sure if they say it's gonna work, that when it comes time to flip the switch, it's not, oh, well now we got this problem.
No.
One of the quotes says seventy-five foot and the, and the other one does not, so, I mean, maybe have them add it to the new repeater quote, so that we can at least have in writing that they agree that it's gonna work on the seventy-five foot tower?
This is the tower, that's fire protection.
Yeah, versus this one.
That was for.
Actually, this is any kind of.
Well, one just for the work on the inside.
One is just to move the existing one, and the other one is to buy a, a new one.
Yeah, they guess up at seventy-five.
I don't think they're guaranteeing the old, the old, the old equipment will work on this, but they are guaranteeing the new will work.
Right, no, I was just saying that the quote for a new one doesn't actually say the seventy-five foot, but the quote to have the old one moved does, so if we're worried about, if we need that verbiage in it, yes.
But it's still, but, uh, Tony, it still says utilizing the existing antenna on, on, on the tower at the fire station.
Right.
Knowing it's just seventy-five feet it's missing, it, it would be hard for them to beat us in court over that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, if they can throw seventy-five foot in there, that'd be.
I was just trying to ease my mind.
Yeah.
Well, no, that, my problem's not the height or anything else, it's just having another company.
Right.
Promising something they couldn't fulfill, and we're stuck with, well, if it doesn't work, we don't pay them.
Yeah.
Here's, here's what I tell you, the day, the day that, the day that they do the install, and we go to, and we, and we go to start the tornado siren, I'll call each and every one of you and.
Call me what?
I don't need that, I'm just.
Where's this money coming from? Do we have this money somewhere?
I've already talked to Cheryl. I, like I said, I don't do anything without talking to her first.
Oh, we do, Cheryl, we got the money?
We don't have much of a choice.
Yeah.
We have to have a tornado siren in our community.
Right.
Only would be to see if Farmer would be willing to.
Right.
Well, but even if they won't.
Still, but yeah.
Well, I'm not, I'm not a fan of moving the old one, I'll tell you that.
No.
Yeah, right, right. You actually pay more in miscellaneous parts, by a thousand dollars, you pay another eighteen hundred dollars in labor if we're using the old stuff.
Yeah, it's a breakdown.
Well, I think we're fortunate to have them to be able to work on the old tower here and have not have to buy a new tower, trying to find a place for it, we're coming off less expensive and. Well, we're, we just, you know, like Stacy and I and, and Mark, we, we just wanna make sure that we've got all of our bases covered, because I, because we all know that you guys are gonna have questions, and, you know, we wanna try and have the answers for you for those questions.
Do we, do we need to vote on which one we want him to do?
I'll make a motion to install a new Motorola hundred watt repeater.
The new one?
The new one.
And I will second that, plus install the word seventy-five foot, uh, between antenna on the seventy-five foot tower at the station, put that in the contract.
I can, I can have them add that, I'll send them an email tomorrow.
Okay.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
Egley?
Yes.
And just, uh, like, like Stacy said, our, our new, uh, our new pagers are in, uh, they're going, they're going to be delivered within the next two weeks. Uh, the programming that we would need for the radios, the, what they call the link layer, uh, that is sitting over at the fire station right now, that's going to be updated, so. P and R is going to be, be here for a few times in the next couple of weeks, you know, in the next, hopefully, month. Um, we, I have told them that, uh, June nineteenth is the date that I was given that that tower is scheduled to, to start, and I, the only reason why I said that is because of the, the email I got from Corey earlier today, so.
But you're gonna tell them when you talk to them tomorrow that, that we've needed done within the month of May?
Yes, yes.
It may say that they would.
Yeah, and they would expedite because they, they understand, they understand, you know, what's going on. So, uh, with that being said. Five-eleven is out of commission again. Uh, last Monday, uh, we had four runs, and what we had been doing was any run that was here in town, and if the hospital was not on diversion, they, they were to take five-eleven, so that way we could see what, would, see if it was going to continue working. On the way back from a call, the headlights started flashing, they went to plug it in and kind of zapped at them, um, Stacy actually kept it unplugged, you know, because we don't wanna burn a building down. Uh, the next day, I immediately called, uh, first response to see how much it was going to cost, because I know, Ron, that's what you would be asking, uh, it's a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour, and it's, and it's three hundred dollars just to get it over to, to way out of it, but it's a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour. And there's no guarantee that you're gonna find it, uh, the other day, we had, uh, we were fortunate enough to have Charlie come in, I showed Charlie some, some issues with, with the ambulance, the entire front doghouse, uh, you could call it, moves. I mean, just, all you gotta do is try and take the radio off and it just moves, so, um, not sure, not sure, you know, throwing another hundred and. So, um, not sure, not sure, you know, throwing another hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour into a sixteen-year-old ambulance. As far as, you know, that's just the chassis. The box, I think, is from the nineties. I could be wrong, but, um, the box is old. We keep having issues. So, I made a, I made a phone call. I made a phone call to Ron. I got some prices on a new ambulance. A new ambulance is gonna be two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
Is availability on something like that, like turnaround?
I'll have it here Thursday for us to look at.
This is a demo that's available.
Um, so needless to say, before you even ask, I went over and talked to Cheryl. I did. And I told her, I said, this is what we've got. These are the three options that we have from Ron. We have the one here in May, or we can wait until October or November. Personally, I don't think that we can wait that long. But I'm not sitting there.
Have you talked, looked at bank loans, like what we did with the other one?
Mm-hmm.
For monthly payments?
We, 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 she did. The interest rate unfortunately is not the best. It, it really isn't. So, you know, that's, that's where we're at. Uh, Saturday, um, we could've used five eleven. We had a car accident right here at the corner of, uh, Brian and, and High Street. And we were having training that day. So, we had five EMTs here. So, you know, two people or one person got transported up to Parkview and the other one got transported down here to CMH. But we had to wait on Sherwood to come into town. For the person to be transported to CMH. That's the ongoing problem. There's no guarantee that when, if we were to have five eleven looked at, that it'd come back and it'd be fine. There's no guarantee, I don't even know how long it would be out. I, 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 I don't. I know this is not the news that you wanted. Not the news I really want to give to you. But at this point, at the, at this point, it is what it is. And, I mean, we have, I, it'd be easier for me to tell you the days that we're not on diversion than it is for me to tell you when we are on diversion. And that's not a slam against the hospital, it really is not. It's just the way it is.
Just like.
But where are you gonna get the money? I mean, you know, uh, we've got a guy up here in Washington, he just prints it. And, and then our great, 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 great grandkids, they can pay for that. But Cheryl don't have a printing press and, uh, and I just don't know where the money's gonna come from. And, uh, my God, you talk to the bank and, and they're telling you that just over seven percent is the best they can do for you? On, on over a quarter of a million dollars? Wow.
I'm gonna first go around.
I mean, I'd check around some other banks. I mean, I was always a, a fan of getting the new EMS, not a, a used one. I know you were talking about getting one a few years old.
Right.
I'm just assuming you're gonna inherit somebody else's problems with it.
Right.
I know we're payment on the other ones, like twenty-five hundred bucks a month.
Yeah.
Uh, we pass that levy, uh, but there's money there from the levy, but I, that would not be able to fulfill all your, hiring all your part-time.
You can't use it for that, it's for wages. That's what that levy was for.
It was for a number of things.
I think it was wages.
They had about.
It's not their budget? No, that's what we went to bat for because they needed more EMTs.
Mm-hmm.
So, so we can't spend it for anything else.
Yep.
That's back, we had two units going back at that time that the, the ambulance was having, both of them running fine and now we've got this situation. Uh, in the meantime though, have you checked out any grants? I know, um, I have spoken with Tim Snyder with, uh, J.D. Vance's office. They said there are some medical grants out there, uh, emergency grants. You've talked to him once, I talked to him again last week. Uh, his office is actually looking at some maybe grants where, uh, areas of not plight, but areas that have certain, certain situations. And we are kind of in a, not crisis mode, but we're changes to our healthcare, um, capabilities in our area. With staffing, with the hospital, with diversion, things of that nature, with transporting farther out. I would definitely see, I don't have a problem working with, with that office, working with Bruce and reaching out to J.D. Vance's office. He said there are some money out there for certain situations like this. Payroll, uh, new equipment because we're traveling farther, need more staffing for that purpose and equipment. So, I would look for some grants. I don't know if you can check with your consortium, uh, reaching out to some of those other entities out there to see if there's any grant money.
Grants just aren't fast.
No.
The problem, and, and I have no problem looking into trying to get a grant. But the problem is, is if I, if I wrote a grant tomorrow, it may not, it may be four months before I get a response.
Or next summer.
Yeah.
Before they even considered you.
Before I even get considered.
Yeah.
And, so, I mean, I'm not saying no, but I'm also being realistic about it, you know, that, that.
Yeah, sooner or later, you can't put up for a grant.
Exactly, if I'm wrong, Cheryl, if, if we financed one, once you finance it and start paying, buying it, you can't get a grant money to pay for it.
No, no. No, but my question would be this, and, and I'm going to defer to Cheryl on this. My question would be this, what is to stop you from buying one now and then re, and refinancing when interest rates go lower?
When do you think that's gonna happen?
Well, hopefully, hopefully, next January when the new, when the new president gets sworn in.
I think, uh.
I think shop around for lower interest rates. I mean, it doesn't have to be a bank here in town. Ideally, you find one here in town, but you also have to go where the rate's at, but.
Well, unfortunately though, the Fed is still at seven percent.
Yeah.
That's, that's the problem. You know, and nobody, and no bank is going to, no bank is gonna sit there and go, well, I'll give it to you at seven percent.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen.
Right. You know?
I still think, I still remember that levy being a hundred percent wages.
Yep.
It's not, I mean, it might've been somebody's intent, but that wasn't, it was for the, it was fire EMS that was awarded. But we even said, it says fire, but it was actually all for EMS. And that's for EMS needs.
Budget.
Budget. Because their budget was deficit spending and it wasn't all wages.
Well, hopefully they'll be back to deficit spending.
If, if they fill all the part-time positions, that was one of my other questions was, how's the EMS billing going with that?
Well, we just started, we just started, uh, May first, so, um, myself and Abby have a meeting with Michelle from the billing company on Wednesday. So, I'll be able to have some better, more concrete answers for you at the next council meeting. Or, you know what, um, after that meeting, I can even call you. So, I have no problem with that, you know, I, it's.
I didn't realize it hadn't started yet because.
Yeah, it happened, it started May first.
Oh, it was, yeah, it was in the last week.
Yeah, so, yeah, the, and they are going back, they are going back to the beginning of January to, so, so that way we can, they can start billing from the beginning of January back. So, yes, part of the, part of the issue is, you know, using the billing money to pay for, for the ambulance itself, you know? And, and also wages, you know? It's, it, we're kind of juggling right now that we're in a juggle game where we're trying to figure out, okay, how do we do this? And how do we do this with just this?
Well, you can't. The, the, the EMT has, has been a losing proposition since its inception, but it's a necessity.
It's a certain.
Right. EMS, E, EMS, and, and if somebody wants to debate me on this, I'll be more than happy to debate. EMS was never, ever going to be a moneymaker, ever.
Not even, it won't even pay for itself, it won't even break even.
Well, part of that, ninety percent of that, Ron, though, is coming from, is coming from those guys in Washington because they refuse Medicaid and Medicare.
Yes, sir.
To pay their fair share.
Yes, sir.
So.
But that's the way it is.
But that's the way it is. But unfortunately, we are here, have to somehow figure out, okay, we have to, we need this. You know, how, how can we do this and still be able to operate? You know, I mean, I mean, right now, right now, we've got, right now, we've, we've got the ability to take one, you know, we got the ability to take one or two patients to Port Wayne if, if we had to. We, we can't, I, I'm not going out of town with that. You know, I'm just not, I'm not, I, you know, I don't even wanna take it down the road because you don't know.
Did, did, when you got a, a price for, for one, two seventy-one or whatever, did, did, was that anything for that one to be traded back against it?
I haven't, no, I haven't talked about that because I wanted to bring this up to you first. I did, uh, so, there's a power cut in the back of five eleven that if we wouldn't have, uh, if I wouldn't have said, yes, we're going to move that, that was gonna be another seventy thousand. So, you would've been looking at three hundred and forty thousand.
For this, for a striker?
No, for, for the new ambulance. Because you gotta have the, you, you want the power cut.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna take the power cut out of.
All right.
Out of five eleven and put it into the new one. Okay, so that saved you seventy thousand dollars, uh, you know, by us just doing that.
Yeah, that's just.
Now, the only other, the only other thing that you're going to have to be aware of, um, it's, you're gonna have to pay for graphics. Okay, cause it doesn't come, you know, with pixel on it. And you're gonna have to pay for radios. Okay, the current radio, there, I mean, there's really no radios in there. So, I got a quote, I just got a quote from PNR. And the reason why we're using PNR is because that's who the counties are using. So, I got a quote for a new radio, um, for seven thousands. Okay, now what does that do? What does that do? That allows us to speak, all right, while we're in the back, while we're in the back, we do not have the ability to speak to any hospital unless we're on our cell phone. And you know, and, and let me tell you, the service between here and Auburn, here and Brian is not good. So, if you've got a critically ill patient and you can't call out, that's a problem. So, so this new radio would be Marx and we would have a second, what they, what they consider, this is what they consider dual head. The second microphone would be in the back. So, that way we could talk directly to the hos, to the ER, uh, without having, without fear of our cell phones, you know, not, not being able to work.
So, you're at two ninety now with graphics and a radio and.
Right.
And, uh.
Call three hundred if you.
Yeah, it's a nice round number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, I don't know, I don't know what they could give us, give us for a trade-in. The, the gentleman that, uh, I've been talking to will be here Thursday with the new ambulance, so that way we could at least look at it. And you know what, I can always ask him, give me, give me a ballpark on what.
You know, you don't have to tell him everything's wrong with it, you know? You could just say, well, sixteen years old, time to go.
As soon as he sees the name on the back, he'll know what's wrong with it. You know, so.
Was it say Beverly?
No. No. But, uh, so that's all my good news for tonight.
Absolutely.
Well, I thank you for doing due diligence and looking at some different options for the ambulance. I mean, we gotta do something. Either fix the old one or, or buy a new one or only have one. I mean, there are pretty much three options. So, it's up to you guys to make that decision and see where we can, where you have to move forward with it.
Is the other one functioning properly?
The, uh, five ten, yes. Yeah, it's functioning properly.
That's good news.
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing that it doesn't have and is the oxygen and, and the reason why it doesn't is because I can't take it out of service long enough. Because five eleven won't stay in service long enough.
Is, is the one that you're bringing down, is it a bigger unit than what the E, E three fifty is?
It's gonna be a four fifty. It's a diesel. Um, it's, it's a little, it's about the same size as, as five eleven now. We've already got the, I've already got the schematics and everything. They're going to, uh, replace some locks for me. But I've, I've got the schematics, I've got pictures. If you wanna see them, stop by tomorrow, I'll show them to you.
Is it advanced style or the conventional style?
It's a, what they consider a type two, so it's gonna be like a truck style.
Except the hood.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other question for, uh, Mr. Bruce?
And if you, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, if you wanted to see, if you want to see it, it will be here one thirty, Thursday afternoon.
I would love to see it and I would love to see you get it. I just don't know how in the world to pay for it. I mean, I've went through, you know, all my business life and want a new backhoe or want a new dozer. And when there's no money there, there's, you're just.
I, I, I mean, you know disrespect, Ron, but does a backhoe or a dozer save people's lives?
But money is money. If you don't have any.
I, I understand what you're saying.
But I can use that backhoe in case that ambulance didn't work.
Did the new computer get set up yet?
No.
Are you just waiting on?
Uh, so the new computers are supposed to, I, I think they're getting ready to start out at the police department and then.
So, you're on the schedule?
Yeah. Um.
Oh, well, I don't think it's gonna be for a while.
Pretty soon. I don't know exactly when.
Right.
But they're ready to go.
He's got all the stuff already bought for him? So, that's gonna be a few weeks.
I'm looking at you now.
Unless you got something that I don't know about.
No, I just saw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Bob was in the day, was he working on, giving you a time schedule with which department are you planning first?
PD.
PD first.
Everybody most complicated.
Any more for Bruce?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Oh, I just wanted, thank you, Bruce.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, park director, anything for you guys?
No, just keeping busy with the.
Napping bangers.
Huh? We're just keeping busy with the mauling in a baseball field.
Baseball's started, but this weekend and their, uh, opening ceremonies and everything, so.
And the girls are starting this week.
Very good. Jared, you're here tonight, thanks for coming. Anything for you?
I got nothing today.
You don't own a part of this deal, do you?
Uh, fiscal officer.
Um, you have the income checks for March, um, and the, oh, it'll be April. The number looks bad and I'm not exactly sure why, so I don't have an answer for you. It's about minus twenty-one over last year. Talk to Kim about that. You also have the, um, mayor's court, which is back up and running, utilities. You have the franchise fee report for media com. Um, I put in a copy of the Hicks TV logo contest that's running and also the scholarship is your authority picture. You got any questions about that, you can ask Phil.
Well, I had a question before you, but please, please make your supports back up and run while we're going with this.
It was down. When we didn't have a clerk, but now we do.
I thought we had a clerk.
You had to get trained.
New mayor, new clerk, new solicitor.
We didn't know, I didn't know this was gonna happen.
I know. We, we can, what we're taking in even pays the salary.
No.
Well, then is it time to revisit to us?
Well, we revisited it here beginning year when I took over. We were waiting for Jennifer to get her training in there. We talked, uh, today's court actually had quite a few more, um, I guess, not customers, please. We've been looking, we're def, we're definitely addressing, um. Um, we've been looking, we're definitely addressing with, with our, things happening within zoning, bringing them in if they don't comply, things of that nature. So me and she's been talking a little bit. Like I said at the beginning, if we don't have enough, I'm gonna get the term wrong again, I don't wanna say customers.
Don't have enough business, you quit.
Well, we need to, we need to make sure that mayor's court's doing its job with having local citations, bring them back to mayor's court and due diligence in the number of court cases we will work on that. I don't wanna give up, we had Rachel spend several hours, I went to mayor's court, there's some more, more mayor's court training, but yeah, let's, we said we're gonna let it ride for a little bit, see how, what happens and I think we need to do that, so.
Well, this is not, this is not what goes on in the mayor's chambers, that's what happens out on the street. And Jared, while you're sitting right there, I got one phone call.
Mm-hmm.
Two texts that they're not, they're not gonna mow their yard because the police department, they won't mow theirs. And I drove out to the PD, looked pretty nasty out there.
We don't mow the PD.
The, 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 the village mowed the PD. Well, they haven't.
He's yelling at me, not you.
And, and the one guy said, and I'll give you his name tomorrow, he's not moving any of his cars that he got a letter on because the PD keeps junk trucks out there.
That's not a junk truck. You wanna say it's a junk truck, it's not a junk truck.
I'm just conveying what was presented to me. It is a junk truck, it's done now, you can get rid of it if you want to.
Rachel, have we not been working on this?
We've been discussing it.
Yes, thank you.
We've been talking about that too, so I've noticed there's some.
How long's it been there?
Three years.
We're gonna get moved. The mowing, we, I'm just, I'm not making, we have a new mowing guy, he started here, what, two weeks ago?
He's also full-time.
Yeah.
So what, the memorial looks bad, the three acres we own looks bad?
Yeah, I can't make excuses, I don't know where he's at and Cory's at.
It's a combination of new guy and, yeah, how many of you have had trouble keeping up on your grass? I know I have mine.
Don't you, you can't use that one because I rode around town and everybody's pretty well got their yards mowed.
He, he got, he got thrown into a bad, he was behind from day one.
Yep.
It was, and we, I even started mowing a few days prior to him coming because it was getting that bad and it has only snowballed with the rain and.
I would hate to see you, I would hate to see you out mowing because you've had enough, if you do your job, you should not be out on a mower.
Sure, and we, we had a discussion with him today that unfortunately, he's just gonna be the one that, I mean, he's basically gonna have to mow from sunup to sundown.
Have, have you, has anybody watched him? Is he, I mean, some people, they just peddled around and.
He's, I know, the only way, I, I go check on him every once in a while and see if he's got any questions because sometimes he has, he's afraid he's gonna get onto somebody's property, they're gonna get mad at him. I said that there, nobody's gonna get mad at you for mowing their yard, they're gonna get mad at you for, and he's, he, one thing is, is he's trying to be, we, since we've had all this with the blowing grass in the road.
Mm-hmm.
He is being diligent about not doing that. We had a discussion whether.
You know, people make such a, a big deal about that and, and I live on, on the state road and I've got this mower and it blows out this way. So when I mow my front yard, instead of going this way and blowing it in the yard, I go this way and you know that that mower will go the same speed and do the same thing and blow it the other way? I don't know why people are having such a problem with that. It's really easy to do.
We're, we're, the best I can say is we're fine tuning him. It was, it was a big task throwing him in and we were, I would say that we were four to five days behind when he started and it's gotten nothing but worse. And we were trying to come up with a solution to get him caught back up today, but just as you said, I don't have time to do it. If I'm doing my job, I don't have.
Exactly.
I don't have time to jump on a mower because we thought, well, maybe we borrowed their, their backup mower down at the park and just go get some of these knocked down, give him a fight, you know, give him, give him a chance to get caught up. But I, on my way here, I ran into him, he had stopped at Marathon to.
I seen him.
Go, go to the restroom and he was headed to try to get two more done tonight.
He was down at the park at four thirty when I came up there.
He was doing the veterans memorial when I was down there.
So we kind of re-expressed our urgency as far as we need to catch up. And that may take ten, twelve hour days right now. Cause he was, he was behind when he started, he was very, he was not very fast when he started. Some of these properties are difficult to mow, there's hidden things in them, they're, they're, they're not smooth. That's not an excuse, that's just a.
I'm just, I'm just reporting the.
Sure.
Calls and the texts that I got today.
Oh, we, yeah.
You gotta quick give out your numbers. I didn't give it out today, none of those three.
Well, you're working, he's kinda still in probation mode here with what he's doing and how he's doing, so.
Yeah, it was, it was a, it was a large topic of discussion today between me and Cory, so we are just telling him to try to have a little bit of patience with us.
And, and I would volunteer my time if you wanted to borrow one of their mowers.
We're using our.
We gotta use ours. You're not gonna go nothing, are you?
We found an empty shed when we went down to look through their mower.
They probably hid it.
Seen us coming.
Okay, anything else for these guys? I've had a couple of quick things. Verizon Tower update, Mark Horniki, I got an email here, I'll just read it real quick, what American Tower said. Mark reached out last week and was really adamant about getting this completed. He threw him a real hard email to American Tower, it says, return back. It says, hi, Mark, ATC is pending approval from Verizon as to relocation of the utilities on site. I have followed up again and unless we hear an objection by the end of the week, which is next week, we will be moving forward and a draft amendment will be issued for your review. So hopefully with the next week here, I mean, it was supposed to be at the end of this week for their final review, I'll reach out to Mark and see if we can get this resolved here within the next week or so to move that.
So, if this falls, falls and fails, how long, it would be a several year process probably if you wanted to throw them off of that property?
Sure, it'd take quite some time, absolutely.
By one. Litigation would take it farther out years. Again, I told you Mr. Keller was patient, he's got some other endeavors, but he is still interested in the property. I think Mark made some leeway, headway with, with his email to him, so hopefully we get him to sign off here real quick. I wanted to give you a quick update, update on that. I went ahead, you have it in your packet, I'd have Cheryl to pass that out, the Ohio Ethics Law, it is required, did all council people take that? It's a one hour class, I took it here the other day on Friday. It's simple, I got a fifty out of fifty, I got most of the questions wrong and the girl, she talks more than she does, you know, different scenarios and she's a very good web speaker, did the questionnaires, like, geez, I'm missing a lot of these, I felt bad, but eh, I took it anyway, still passed, so. It, it was simple, if you guys could take it online, it's easy, so.
How'd you get a fifty out of fifty and you missed a lot of questions?
Well, it was like, she, she started skipping questions because she had talked so long about certain situations and, and things that can happen, but she said, ah, we'll just start skipping the questions and moving forward. I had four, yeah, unethical, you could do that, but you get an hour worth of credit.
That is one we have to take.
Yeah.
Is that different than the sunshine law?
Yes. That's a three hour course.
Did we get an answer on the sunshine law?
The other sunshine law was ninety-nine percent ethics.
It is, it's covering the same stuff.
They're both, they're different.
It is, it's covering the same stuff.
There's a lady talking to you right here.
It could be from the same.
I did the ethics one, you know, I sent you my certificate, but it was a lady and a guy talking and they just went through a lot of different scenarios.
Right. They give you some scenarios to say yea or nay on, it's pretty.
You can watch out any time you want, just once you start it, you have to watch it the whole, throughout the whole thing and you can't just walk away from it, you gotta follow through, you gotta answer questions and then it'll continue playing.
And if you think you're gonna get away with it, little thing comes on, are you still there?
It doesn't even do that.
Doesn't it?
No.
No, she is very personable, I mean, she's pretty interested, it's quick and simple, it was fun. I mean, she had a lot of different scenarios and situations that you can put yourself in or you shouldn't get in and she would ask questions, some of them were trick questions and, you know, she would give you the answers of different things, so.
Fun.
Please get that done. We have four fire chief resumes at this time, the ad ran, I'm gonna get, I asked Eric Bassett and Tony, and then we've got two firemen that are gonna be on my committee, so we're gonna start doing interviews here, probably not the end of this week, but the following. So like I said, we've got four applicants that hadn't submitted, but we will get started on that. That's all I have. I know school's getting close to coming to an end, there's lots of activities at the school, they had prom this last week.
Why is he doing that?
What?
Pulling Tony and Eric and for police and fire.
I'm picking the chairman of the personnel committee and a chairman for fire and then two firemen.
I see.
Okay. We're out on that. It's all I have, is anything else for the council to address? Make a adjourn to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.